Is having a roundtable here in Athens County on Thursday later this week. One o'clock at the Athens Public Library. So if you have need of speaking to your representative, she'll be there at one o'clock. As long as you need her, I'm ready. We have Dr. Pam Benoit, who is Executive Vice President and Provost of the university, and Stephen Golding, who is Vice President for Finance and Administration for the university. They have received recently an economic impact study that they had arranged for some time ago. And they have presented it to the Board of Trustees. And then they called us and said, would we like to have them come and present it to us? And of course, we would like that. And so they are here tonight. We have, as members, councilmembers, we've received, everybody has an executive summary. So we're kind of hopefully familiar with the information. But if you have comments or questions, please wait until their presentation is over, which should be 15, 20 minutes, something like that. So we're going to turn it over to Mr. Golding and Dr. Benoit.
I want to thank you first for inviting us to come. We're very pleased to be here to talk a little bit about the economic impact study that we had commissioned for the university. And what we want to do is to give you some of the highlights of this study. I know when we met with you for, I believe it was for lunch, we talked a little bit about how this study was being done. And we have now the executive summary of that study and the one pager that highlights some of the key features of that study. We're still in the process of finalizing the full report, which runs about 100 pages. But this does give the highlights. What the economic impact report does is it documents the sum total of the value of the university's many ongoing activities and enterprises. And what we've tried to do is to talk about how the university is operating as an economic engine, both for Athens, as well as the region and the state. And it does that because it's a major employer. It provides education and workforce training. It's a research institution, and it's also a regional steward. What the report also does is it also makes the case for continued investment so that the university can continue to be that economic engine. One of the things that we think is particularly important is by laying out all the different ways in which the university functions. And so the report has different chapters that details the ways in which we have economic impact. It does that through a traditional economic impact assessment. It talks about the ways in which we provide talent and workforce development, the ways in which we provide economic impact through our research, scholarship, and creative activity, the innovation and entrepreneurial ecosystem that we've built, the way in which we contribute in terms of health and wellness, the environment, infrastructure, and sustainability, citizens' quality of place, and community engagement, which I know will be of particular interest to this group. And then also, not just in Athens, but also our regional campuses, and finally, the concluding remarks. I'm going to start by talking about the way, the important introduction, how Ohio University is in fact the sum of its parts, how in fact, we feel like we are a partner in promoting regional economic development with many of our partners, and how we have a regional footprint that has both a quantitative and a qualitative impact. You'll hear tonight a lot of those numbers, but we also want to emphasize the qualitative way in which the university has an impact on its communities and ways in which it educates its students. One of the things that we think is particularly important is that historically, universities tended to think of themselves as silos, and that their primary function was simply to educate students, to teach those students, and to make new discoveries. But now, universities see themselves in a much more elaborated role, that they see themselves much as integrated organizations that focus on teaching students and undertaking cutting-edge research, but also for the purpose of positively impacting their communities, their regions, their state, and their world. So that there's a much larger focus of universities and purposes for universities today. The first thing we did was this traditional economic impact assessment for Ohio University. And what we did in this report was to think about how Ohio University has a cumulative economic activity that results from its spending, the jobs supported by its spending, the earnings of the workers in those jobs. And we looked at that not only for Athens, but we looked at that for the regional campuses. We looked at it as a public university that impacts the entire state. We examined how the largest public university in southeast Ohio impacts this region, how its six campuses and its two centers also impact their communities as well. And you'll see in the reports that you've looked at, that we started to look at the numbers. What does this mean in terms of the economic impact in terms of the numbers? Ohio, for example, generated $1.5 billion in economic output impact on the state of Ohio in 2012. Another important number is that we generated $104 million in state and local tax revenue in 2012 by activity that was associated with the university. We also generated $259 million in state and local tax revenues. We supported over 14,300 full-time and part-time jobs. And we know that we also had a contribution in terms of the median annual salaries. So by the numbers, there was significant economic input that Ohio University contributed to our communities. One of the other areas that I'm going to focus on is talent and workforce development. And if you think about that, you think about the kinds of students that we're producing in terms of talent and workforce development. I think we'll postpone.
I think so, too.
Okay. From accountants to primary care doctors to teachers, we are training in the talent and workforce development that's important for not only our region, but for the state and even beyond the state. So we have traditional educational offerings coupled with very practical workforce experience that helps to train the next talent and workforce. And that's also incredibly important. And again, by the numbers, you can see some of these beginning to have fruition. So, for example, we have 13 very important community college partnerships that develop pipelines from community colleges into the university that help to train students. We have, for example, $369 million of student-generated economic activity in the state of Ohio, 135 school district and educational institutions partnering with Ohio, just as some examples of the kind of talent and workforce development that begin to display this in terms of numerical data. A second important piece, as a research institution, is our research, scholarship, and creative activity. And again, here, we're cultivating undergraduate, graduate, and faculty research, equipping them with world-class resources, attracting funding, attracting partnerships, international attention into our part of Ohio, into southeast Ohio. Research activity that allows us to explore, advance understanding, discovering results. And by the numbers, again, it's quite impressive. $30 million in total external research in FY '12. Number one in the state of Ohio, and I'm talking about the entire state, including Ohio State, in terms of licensing revenue, were number one. Number four in the country in terms of research, return on investment on research nationally. And again, you think about the kind of research that's being done here, from John Kopchak's research, which many of you know about, to the Corrosion Center, to the kind of research that's been being done on educational practices. It's all across the board. So again, the numerical data also supports the kind of importance that we're doing in terms of research, scholarship, and creative activity by the numbers. My partner on crime? We'll talk about innovation.
You should say that in public, please.
I'm sorry.
One of the reasons why we undertook this was we wanted to capture in a single document the sum total of the university, because we sometimes forget that in order to be a 21st century research university, the requirements to meet the needs of our students, to meet the needs of our communities are much greater than they were 15, 20 years ago. And how universities are judged in the 21st century are judged by not only how they teach and what they teach, but also how they impact their local communities, how they impact their states. And one of the areas where Ohio has been a significant leader is in the area of the innovation and entrepreneurial ecosystem. And that has multiple benefits. One, in terms of the infrastructure that the College of Business and the Vujnovich School has built in terms of the Innovation Center, in terms of the Angel Network, in terms of the infrastructure that's necessary to develop and promote small businesses in the region. And there are numerous examples of that. But also, in terms of the opportunities that those programs provide to Ohio students who are interested in understanding what is required to be entrepreneurial, and how one has to think about the development of business activity as it relates to part of their educational experience. And here, you can see that we've had a tremendous impact. We've talked about licensing revenues. We've talked about dollars generated through the Small Business Development Center to support business activity, the fact that we not only are doing this because it is part of our public mission, but also because return on investment allows us to generate dollars to reinvest back out again within the community. The spinoffs that have had tremendous economic advantage for the university, exemplified by Diagnostic Hybrids, or the number of patents that generated that represent the intellectual strength of our faculty. And at the end of the day, in five years, because of the efforts of the College of Business, because of the efforts of the Vujnovich School, there's been $143 million worth of external economic activity generated through tech growth. The same is also true in terms of health and wellness, that when you look behind the programs, you can see that Ohio is a leader in promoting primary care physicians in the state. You can see that Ohio generates almost 25% of allied health professionals within the state. You can see that the innovative programs using technology to expand the breadth, the footprint of Ohio University that allows students to have access to our faculty has had tremendous impact, and has led to research as well. So that, and that translates out not only into educational opportunities, but it also translates out into significant clinical services for our local community. And the key statistic that I point to is the 31,900 residents of southeast Ohio who are beneficiaries of the health services that are provided out of health sciences and professions out of the Heritage College of Osteopathic Medicine. So it's more than just the fact that we are educating the next generation of healthcare providers. It is that we, while we are doing that, we are also providing services to our local community, to the citizens within our local community. We talk a great deal about stewardship. We talk a great deal about partnering with our governmental peers. We talk about the partnerships that we've built in terms of building the infrastructure, being good citizens, having an impact on restoring the community around the college and recognizing the university, and recognizing that this is also part of what students want to learn, but they also want the practical experience that goes along with it. And there again, the number of jobs that are created through the efforts of our capital program, to the materials that we recycle, to the reduction in our carbon footprint, to the number of projects that we've done with the city and the county. There is a broad set of opportunities that this report captures in terms of the partnerships and the collaborations that have been created, but also the positive impact that we've been able to have on our community through the activities that have been jointly sponsored, and the opportunities that have been provided for students to learn in this very important area today. And the same thing is true about quality of place and citizenship. One of the things that we have spent a great deal of time thinking about and working on is the nature of what it means to be a good neighbor, what it means to be a good citizen. And we have spent a fair amount of time thinking about everything from childcare to cultural activities, to providing opportunities for social experiences across the broad spectrum of programs that the university has to offer. And we continuously think about how we can add to that, because what it does is it really represents opportunities for our students. And here again, we can see that we've had over $75 million worth of economic activity generated by the visitors who come to Athens annually to attend events, visit museums, go to shows, and so forth. And the value of WOUB in terms of its outreach more broadly to over 630,000 households. Again, it is partly rich in content. It is partly the opportunity set that is provided to our students, but just as much, it's the impact that we have on the local community that is absolutely essential to the programs that we have and the services that we offer. And the same thing's true with the regional campuses. The economic activity developed, generated by our regional campuses is well documented within the report, but even more than that is the resources that our regional campuses represent in their local communities. And the report tries to capture in a variety of different ways, not only the jobs and the employment and the student enrollment and the economic activity, but it also captures the social programs and services that the individual regional campuses provide, the unique programs that it offers to the citizens within their own unique regions. And so it is the sum total of all of these things that really we sought to capture within this economic impact study. And you might ask, well, why and how are you going to use it? And the point that I made at the end of the presentation to the Board of Trustees back in August is that if you review the report and read the report, it sets a pretty high bar in terms of what Ohio University means to southeast Ohio, but just as importantly, what Ohio University means to the state of Ohio. It's not lost on us within the university that the Heritage College of Osteopathic Medicine was recruited to Columbus to provide primary care. It was recruited to Cleveland to provide primary care. It is not lost on us in terms of the services and the programs that we offer, we believe are directly contributive to the reasons for why we had the highest growth in the student body within the state of Ohio this past year, representing the quality of the programs. And the point that we made to the trustees is, we've set a high bar, and the challenge is, is how do we continue to invest in those programs? How do we continue to grow the university in smart ways, in strategic ways, which will ensure 10 years from now, when the next group of people sit down and try to do a document like this, they can, they can in fact capture that same level of strength, that same level of quality, that same level of opportunity that is represented in this document? So in some respects, the economic impact study, while it certainly defines Ohio University today, and how it touches its students, and touches its community, and touches the state, it also provides a roadmap for the future in terms of what the university needs to do in order to ensure that future generations of students and citizens of the state will be able to benefit from what this university does and means to the state as a whole. So with that, I'll stop, and the Provost will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you both for being with us and presenting this information. We're certainly excited and impressed by the numbers, but personally, I'm most impressed by the contact that the university has had with our community, and the, as you pointed out, the enrichment that it has brought to the community. So thank you for coming tonight and for that activity. Do we have comments, questions from councilmembers? Remember Nysley?
Thank you both for coming tonight. It's so often we're in the confines of the focus of Athens City, and so it's nice to have some conversations and hear about the successes that go beyond our municipal limits, but also go out to the region and the state as well. And I would comment, too, that I think it is very important. You mentioned the silos kind of thought and trying to integrate things, and the movement towards that. And I know, I think it seems like there is more coordination between city and university, and more efforts in that area. I do have one question, and this relates to some information about the increased enrollment. And then now I'm back to my municipal concerns from a financial perspective. And I know that we're blessed in many ways with that increased enrollment, and that will bring more visitors, more occasion for people. But also, two years from now, some of those students will be then part of the community that you talked about, the citizenry, and also in the neighborhoods and in apartments. So my question is, will the growth, is that anticipated to continue expanding? And I would challenge us to continue the conversation, I guess, of how that might impact the neighborhoods and housing stock. But my question is, will the numbers continue to grow for, you know, the number of increased residents in Athens proper?
So let me take that one, since you already gave me the questions anyway. So we have a five-year enrollment report that we have put together that's a plan about where we anticipate growth to be in terms of enrollment. And this is a pretty extensive report that lays out where we think the patterns of enrollment will be over the future. And one of the things that we've done is we've looked at growth, for example, in transfer students, growth in international students, growth in online students, growth in graduate students. So we've looked at all the sectors of the populations that we try to recruit to the university. And over the last several years, for example, we've seen a fairly significant growth in our online population. And these are students who are not in Athens. These are students who are in other locations. And in fact, one of our most popular online programs is the RN to BSN program. And these are nurses who are working in hospitals all across the state, and in some cases, in other states, who are taking our program because it is a convenient way for them to earn their degrees. And those do not add to our neighborhoods, but are in fact providing an incredible quality education to working employees. I said in other contexts that I was, that I happened to be in a hospital in Columbus at one point, and two of my nurses were in that program, and were having incredible experiences, positive experiences in that program, and shared with me what a great experience and what a wonderful opportunity it was for them to be involved in our online program. So our anticipation is not that we will have huge increases that will swamp the neighborhoods, but that we will have different kinds of populations that we will be attracting. And online is part of that, a part of that growth pattern as well. So one of the things that we're very interested in is, you'll see when you look at high school graduates, that high school graduates in the state of Ohio are declining. And so we're trying to think about, how do we think about enrollment so that we're leveraging the possibility of enrollments in different kinds of populations? And online is one of those populations that we're interested in. We also know that because Ohio graduates are declining, that we need to be attracting out-of-state and international students. So we're trying to think about where we start to attract other kinds of students as a result of that. But our anticipation is not that there will be huge increases in the number of students who are on the Athens campus. You'll also see, if you look at our numbers, that we've seen increases in our regional campus numbers. So that there's, again, there's not a huge increase in the numbers of students who are on the Athens campus. It's a gradual growth increase. But if revenues are to be good for the institution, we need to be thinking about how we're always thinking about ways in which the enrollment patterns are stable and strong for the university. And that's what we've been doing, and we've been very successful at it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a question, and it has to do with Heritage Colleges of Osteopathic Medicine and the new campus up in Columbus. And I think, Steve, you kind of mentioned this a little bit, but one of the things I've often thought about is, will that change some of the dynamic of training shifts or internships in southeastern Ohio? If Columbus becomes the hub, are you going to see more training shifts throughout the city of Columbus, or in Cleveland, and less in kind of the more impoverished areas down here in southeastern Ohio in terms of training and residencies?
I probably know more about that topic than he does. So let me, so one of the things that we've done is that, as we've established the Dublin Campus, we have a very close working relationship with Ohio Health, and they've helped us work on what kinds of residencies we might have with them, and the same thing with the Cleveland Clinic. So we have the core hospitals that are also affiliated with us, and so they help us to place our students. Those relationships are still very strong. We will still be placing students into those locations as well. But this increases our possibilities of having different kinds of locations that we can place our students into. But think about what will happen here, is that now we need increased residencies for our students, because not only do we, well, we have the Athens campus, where we'll be placing those primary care physicians, but we also have the Columbus location and the Cleveland location. And we need an increased number of residencies for all of those primary care docs that will be out there. And so we'll have, we'll need the current location and additional locations for residencies as well. So does our mission change in terms of providing primary care physicians? Absolutely not. Are we interested in rural primary care physicians? Absolutely. That continues to be an important part of our mission. But we also have additional needs that we need to be addressing with those two new locations.
Thank you.
In the larger report, the 100-page report that you will put forward, is there a general discussion of, you put forward all the positive impacts that Ohio, or you have, has on the city. Is there a general discussion of interaction between the city and city police, the university police, impacts on city with kind of the off-campus impacts of students? And that general idea, because I think that a lot of people in the city, the taxpayers, looks at OU and they say, oh, well, we have all these impacts from the street parties and from Halloween, and they see that as a huge impact. And that's quality of life impact, and it's a tax impact directly for the city. And I'm wondering if you expand on that in the bigger report or...
All right, that one's yours. How do you address that sort of issue?
The report itself does not explicitly go into that, but I think that within the overall context of what we were trying to capture within the titles and talking about quality of life and so forth, those issues are understood. And I think there is ongoing conversations between the senior leadership of the university and the leadership of the city in terms of how we can solve or mitigate or work collaboratively together on those issues. And I think, I mean, I think that there are a number of efforts that are going on, whether it be the MOU work that's going on between the president's office and the mayor's office, whether it be the work of the police chiefs in trying to establish the joint advisory committee to talk about those issues, to the myriad of opportunities that we've had to work collaboratively on individual projects where the university and the city could be beneficiaries of this. So I would say, at least in my time, my three years here, I've seen a concerted effort sort of across the board to try to identify areas where we can work collaboratively together and to try to leverage the collective resources so that, you know, not one side or the other is bearing the full burden of that. I mean, that conversation though is quite frankly no different than the conversation that took place in Ithaca, New York. It was no different than the conversation that took place in Boulder, Colorado, and certainly was no different than the conversation that took place in Philadelphia when you live around, you know, large research universities with 20,000 students. It's a...
Right, but it is part of the impact. I mean, there's positive impacts and there's also other negative impacts and...
Absolutely, and those are ones that must continuously be monitored and assessed and worked together. There's no denying that it's a double-edged sword.
Right, thank you.
Thank you for coming. Really appreciate it. And I'll be brief to continue that cooperation, that communication and those groups meeting. That's really what needs to happen, and we've done a great job, I'd say. I've been here 20 years, so the last 10, there's been a constant increase of that.
Yeah, and I'll echo real briefly, I'll echo, thank you, Mayor, for pausing. I appreciated the, thank you for bringing the ivory tower to us in the city building this evening. Thank you. And I appreciated the friendly shout-out here acknowledging the memorandum of understanding. I know a lot of people have worked hard in both administrations to continue. I'm really fuzzy on TV, what's going on? There we go, thanks. But thank you, because I think that continued partnership and collaboration is essential for both entities to succeed. So again, I applaud you being here this evening and presenting the information and the dialogue, and hopefully we can continue to move together forward. Thank you.
Mayor Wild.
Again, thanks for coming. We do work as best we can together. The MOU is just one part of it, and really that's very similar to this. It was a benchmark of why we're working together and where we have places to improve, and there's always room for improvement. Realize we've been here, both of us, for 200-plus years, and it's always, you can always forget how well and how well we've worked together and how much we need each other. It's not like the university can take over a wastewater treatment plant, or we can start teaching everybody everything that they need to be the good citizens, as well as stewardship. And if I talk, I talk to other mayors around this state, and we're unique in one sense because we are a town-gown city. We're an education city that was founded on education, and therefore we have to work together. But the fact is that it gives us vitality, you as well as I know, you know, a lot of you are associated with the university, as is, that we wouldn't be here otherwise, that the vitality wouldn't be here otherwise. Discussions I have with other cities that you say, okay, we need a business incubator. Well, we have two or three of them, between AceNet, you know, TechGrow Innovation Center, and as well as the Small Business Institute up at the ridges in Voynovich. We have a plethora of these, and there's always going to be gaps, there's always going to be room for improvement. I mean, they started Diagnostic Hybrid, they started Irvine Hall, three researchers just bubbling away there many, many years ago, Dave Schoel, Jollick, and Brown. And you watch this, and you watch SunPower, which is a spin-off of an engineer from the university with Sterling Technologies. Putting on my Economic Development Council hat there, I realize there's a lot more we can do. We're in Appalachia here, and getting that, the R&amp;D to get out into the business side of it is a very difficult task, and it takes, it takes a lot of different moving parts. But the fact is that we wouldn't be here otherwise. We'd be like, I don't know, Pomeroy or Chancy maybe, or something like that. I mean, we wouldn't have the parking meters. Some people say, oh, you have parking meters. We tore them out years ago because we couldn't get anybody to come downtown. We have a certain vitality there. There are impacts though. There are, you know, as you say, the growth part, we're totally upside down when it comes down to rental market. But again, it's, I think we're doing well together all in all. I think that's important. Conversation with Doc McDavid today, we covered most of this ground, enrollment size, upcoming parties, nuts and bolts of how the things are being built and where are they going to go. The place I used to work with, Clippenger, is now, it might be phased out sometime in the future. Not that I'll miss it too much, it's a nice building, but it's showing its age. So we have to, we have to look towards the future, what we want to do. And I guess that's a question I have. I mean, this report, does it give some guidance of what's going to, what we're going to see in the next 10 years? I mean, you've done reports of this economics, talk about online classes, so there's going to be a trend to become much more, I don't know, cloud-based or something like that. There'll always be a need for this campus, I assume, right?
Oh, of course, of course. I don't think the residential campus will ever go away. This report does not talk about the future, but in fact, what we did with the Board of Trustees at the last meeting was, in the retreat, was to talk a lot about the future. We talked about what we anticipate in terms of students and future students and what they will look like and what kinds of enrollment trends we see coming. We talked about space and what we think will happen in terms of space on the campus and different kinds of choices we might be making around space. We talked about smart growth and what kind of strategies the university needs to be making in terms of smart growth. So we spent a very large part of our day with the Board of Trustees doing exactly what you talked about. It's not a part of this report. The report is already 100 pages, so we were trying very hard to keep it constrained to identifying both, as we talked about, the numbers in relationship to economic impact, but also telling a lot of the very rich stories around economic impact within the university as well. And that really was its, that was its mission to tell about that and not to be so focused on the future, except to say, if you want this to continue and you want it to grow, continued investment is necessary. And that was the message that we were trying to deliver to the board as well. But we are having those conversations, both with the senior leadership and with the board, about what are the next steps? How do we need to continue to think about the future, and how do we continue to innovate at the university in order to move forward? And those have been very much the conversation.
And I want to add, I was just perusing the telephone book earlier today. I'm surprised, I was looking for a physician, a particular physician, and I'm looking at all the DOs, and I realized most of those DOs are probably coming out of the school, you know? I mean, you know, you just go through, there's a whole section for those. The other side, of course, is that when you have more alumni out there, and again, economic council side is, when we start looking at talking about businesses and business opportunities there, we don't have to talk that much to alumni. They know the place already. It's not like we have to convince them that Athens exists and that it's down here and it's beautiful. They know it already. So, and every year, you basically add another, you know, 4,000 to 5,000, you know, tourist, alumni, and people who know what Athens is. And many of them want to stay here, as you know. We can't supply them all with jobs or give them a place to stay even. But that's the wealth that's being generated as well. Every year, our membership grows, our community grows in that sense. It's a, it's an off-site community in one sense, but it's everybody who knows Athens at one point or another, and all have stories about it and all remember it.
The uniqueness.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you so much for having us.
This is committee meetings, so we're going to move into Planning and Development Committee. Member Fall is the chairperson here.
Great, thank you, Mr. President. We talked, we spoke briefly last week about signing on as an amicus with, for the Monroe Falls Appeal, Court Appeal. So we discussed it and whether we had to have a resolution, and I think we kind of decided as members with Pat Lang and stuff, we don't necessarily need a resolution that county puts forward two years. Discussing it tonight and saying, go for it, would serve the purpose. So I want to open it up and see what council members have to say about it. I would just say, go for it.
Okay, I did give you like a two-page summary. I don't think I gave one to Pat.
I'm familiar with the KK, yes.
Yeah, well, you got the 40-page brief and everything like that. So, and again, it's really there just saying, you know, do we want to add her name to it? It's not a big deal in one sense, but I did want to get the tone and see what needs to be done.
I would say that's consistent with our most recent legislature, you know, the legislation we passed over the last 18 months is to continue to support this kind of effort to get our legislators and the voters in general just to be thinking about and wondering about what's going on in their communities. And this is a good way to do this, this will get a lot of press as well. I look at, we've all seen the pictures of Colorado, and I think about all the flooding out there. Yes, sewer treatment plants are flooded, yes, many other things are flooded, but, you know, what was the long-term range planning when they put all the oil and gas wells in a flood zone? You know, and so now they're floating and they're polluting farther on downstream. So, again, I just think this only begins to highlight and to get people to be thinking about the importance of how these things are regulated.
At the, at the farmers' market, I was talking to one of the farmers' markets and certified organic farms, they have to be basically, you know, chemical-free for, I think, six to seven years. The gentleman I was talking to said, some of these farms that were, you know, organic farms in Boulder, pretty much wiped out. I mean, once the oil goes over the top of it, you're not certified anymore. You're not certified for a long time. And so this was the concern, he was saying is that this could happen, could happen here, you know? But the fact is, that's what happens when you're mixing, we have a total lack of zoning or control of zoning at this point, where you could, you know, put a, you know, oil well right next to an organic farm and without, in theory...
Well, that's happening possibly in our county right here, so...
But it's not even a lack of zoning. They also don't have to pay attention to city floodplain regulations and all the other regulations, because right now, the home rule has completely been denied, and that's one of the reasons for this court appeal. And so, and I, you know, you talk about economic development, you know, having organic farming, all sorts of farming here is a really important driver of our, you know, of our economy here. They're established, they have jobs, they are, you know, supplying tax revenue for us. So I think that, I would encourage, I fully support the administration in doing this. Chris?
I would, I would agree that I fully support it, and our previous ordinances, yes, are consistent with then-now showing support for this case.
I'm also voicing my support and kind of want to take the whole conversation that you just had with the organic farmers to kind of another level, which is all farmers. You know, they may not be organically certified, but in my conversation with several of the farmers throughout, and affiliated with the 30 Mile Meal efforts, that they too would be impacted to the point where they couldn't trust their own produce or cattle or egg quality at that point.
Thank you. Similarly, I too would like to echo my support, and we think, we just heard about the economic impact the university has in the community, and we heard not but a few months ago about the impact of the arts in our community, as well as the food movement here. Considering all of that and our wellness and quality of life issues, I think this is imperative and this is essential that we jump on board and support. Thank you.
Okay.
I would just like to add one other thing, and the disparity that goes on with this industry, and we may not be drilling right in our locale here, but the waste has to go somewhere. And the waste is even less regulated, as we're learning. And so I just think everybody who has concerns need to understand that this is an industrial process, because after the gas is drilled, then there's condensate tanks, which we saw floating in the waters in Colorado and other things. And so it's an industrial process. And, you know, just because one area is drilling doesn't mean that you won't be impacted in another region. And as we know with the waste, the EPA trying to decide what to do with regulation with the waste on the barges along the Ohio River. I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but the Ohio River is a water source for millions of people. So, again, I just think it behooves us, as we've all said already, to be supportive of this kind of measure.
Okay. And it does indeed sound as though we are supportive, so what do you need us to do?
Doesn't sound like anything from...
Yeah, I think we decided that...
Yeah, I think the idea was just to get a sense of counsel, and the mayor certainly has the authority to move forward.
May I sign anything?
No.
No, I'll be signing something, this is an agreement.
The mayor's going to sign it?
Doesn't have to go before any body to decide whether it's okay to do this.
Go for it.
But we can all say yay, you know?
Yay. Sounds very informal. Okay, thank you.
You have some direction from council at least now.
Thanks a lot, okay.
Okay, I don't have any miscellaneous, miscellaneous...
You don't?
No. I probably could think of if I really...
Okay, so we'll move on to finance and personnel, which is all miscellaneous.
And we have six... We have six miscellaneous items, one of them being an announcement, just to inform the public that the auditor's office and the mayor have weekly meetings to review finances, and sometimes council members are present for that, and so we wanted to make you aware. Those meetings are usually on Wednesdays at 2:30, but this particular week, the meeting will be at 10 o'clock on Tuesday, which is tomorrow. So we just wanted to make sure the public was informed that a meeting taking place. Second item is more of an internal policy, and this is about our credit card policies. And we had some discussion of that a few weeks ago, and I'd like to thank the law director and the auditor for helping us with additional information. If I'm understanding right, no formal council action is required, but that our council offices have their own credit card policy, which was enacted some years ago. So we do need to make sure we review that, and as I understand it, we need to make sure that it's in compliance with the regulations set up in Ohio Revised Code 301.27. Some of those basic things saying, we need to identify in the policies who's authorized to use it and which kind of items may be purchased and which kind of items would be prohibited from purchase, and then guidance on what would happen if we cannot account for a particular purchase with a credit card.
If I could just weigh in real briefly on that, since I wasn't here for that conversation last week, I think I just wanted to thank the auditor for having brought this issue forward, and we're certainly fortunate that, you know, when it comes to issues like this, that she gets these briefings at state auditors' conventions, and, you know, it's her office that they go to during the annual audit if they find that there are not necessarily discrepancies, but find that we don't have the sorts of internal policing measures in place that we need to have. And so I certainly will do whatever I can to help reach out to the other departments within the city to make sure that everyone understands that we have to have these policies, they should be as uniform as possible, and just to try to make sure that we're crossing every T and dotting every I. And again, just want to thank Auditor Hector for having brought this forward.
Thank you.
Have a question.
Yes.
As part of the review and seeing what standards we have to apply, does that, would that include briefing council on the procedures directly rather than just say, here's a memo, read it and sign off on it? Something more formal, is what I'm asking.
We could certainly have something in writing that we would show... We could certainly have something in writing that we would share with council members, yes. I mean, there is an ordinance that was passed creating the council credit card policies previously.
But if it seemed like in any standard for an auditor, there would be something that says, "Council, each council member is briefed upon the procedures when they enter into their councilship" or something. It seems like that would just be a reasonable thing to do. Otherwise, someone could fall through the crack, and they'd have a very good reason, like, "Well, no one told me anything about it."
Right.
Yeah, now you may say, "Well, implicitly, you should look on the website or go through the Ohio Revised Code and find it." On the other hand, I have a pretty good legal argument to argue my way out of it, too. So, I'm trying to close the crack before.
It makes sense, yes, that we make sure we inform everybody and share the information. Yes, Councilmember Patterson?
One option to this issue may just be to have it included in the city council orientation meeting that usually occurs.
There you go, yeah. That'd be perfect.
Parking on the third floor, too, that one.
Okay. I will mention one other thing, though, that could be considered. Would it be helpful to have an ordinance on the books saying there is a council, or there is a policy, citywide, that complies with, I'll just place that out there for consideration as we develop it. I wouldn't have, mean to put you on the spot tonight for it, but is that it's citywide that we comply with Ohio Revised Code 301.27, all the departments have policy that at least, you know, that meets that, and sometimes in what we found for police and fire, it exceeds the basic conditions. But if we passed an ordinance, then all of them would come under review.
I mean, it gets into, and I don't want to get into a lot of the details here, having not seen the council policy here, and the legislative versus the executive authority, and technically, since we're not talking about an appropriation of money or any sort of area where we necessarily have to have a unified citywide policy, it's not necessarily an area that would be appropriate for council action.
Okay.
But each individual department should certainly be making sure that they're taking the steps necessary to make sure that their department is compliant.
That's a help. So, we'll develop then for council offices, then our set of policies for review, and make sure we disseminate the information. Yes, Mayor?
Your last policy was, what, 2001, right?
Correct.
Okay, so.
Actually, council doesn't have a policy. They decided not to take action, and I know Debbie knows this, too.
Oh, I know too, I see.
There's a policy that was brought before council in like 2001, before my time.
April 2001.
And they decided not to take action. So, something was written up, but council didn't accept it, and it's a city council policy, it wasn't citywide. But Debbie did ask for other samples today, and so I assume she's going to put one together for you guys to review for your own policy.
We'll make sure we have it in place. Thank you, and thanks for all the papers, yeah, and the references. Okay. The next item is the Assessment Equalization Board, and we have mentioned this several times previously, and in a few minutes, when we begin our session of reading the special session, you'll hear the reading for this ordinance. And what this is, is an appointment of a board to review cases that have been requested to look at decisions made for the assessments being made on the Columbus and Lancaster Road. We do have three persons who will be serving on that board, Dave Discutner, John Garvey, and Sharon Hugie. They will be meeting on October 8th. So, we will likely pass this under suspension, so that we do have it in place in time for them to meet on October 8th, given that our next meeting is October 7th for city council. Next item is just to, kind of a time, very brief reminder of a timeline that we have approaching us as we come to the end of the fiscal year, and that we have the budget process beginning. And the mayor and the auditor's office work very closely to be looking at our end-of-year balances, as well as then expected revenue projections for the next year, and what we'll be needing to allocate. So, that some of that work will begin very soon. Council will be beginning to see drafts later on, and then be looking at final budget ordinance on December 2nd. So, there will be three meetings in December where we have three meetings on that budget ordinance, so that we have a budget going into the new fiscal year. Next item has to do with safety fund purchases, and we're, it's come to our attention through the Service Safety Director, that we need to have some items at various city locations, one of them being panic buttons at the community center. We need to have those installed. Also, the defibrillators for the second-floor law administration building, and then replacement of some of these AED batteries and pads, and those tend to be fairly expensive items. So, if I'm, Service Safety Director Mosley has prepared some information. The defibrillators and some of that basic equipment will be approximately $6,000, and then $2,000 for some additional supplies. So, we'll be looking at $8,000 appropriation for those, that equipment. And then the other thing is, is some additional monies that may be needed, or there will be, for the community center between now and December. And they have to do with supplies, and also some heat bump bearings, it looks like also some utility costs from Columbia Gas and American Electric Power, and then some other miscellaneous supplies. All totaled, the current estimate is approximately $20,000 for these various items that will be needed, and we'll have the full details of that for an appropriation ordinance. And are there any other miscellaneous items that we need to cover under finance? I think we're finished.
Looked like somebody was getting ready to say something. No? Okay. Are we done?
We're done. Thank you.
Before we go into our special session, I just want to remind council members and anybody watching that we won't have any type of council meeting next Monday. That's the 30th of September. Remember, we meet on the first four Mondays of the month. And so, our next meeting, as Member Nysely mentioned momentarily ago, is actually on October 7th. So, we're going to, we'll be skipping a Monday in there, but, so, we'll be meeting on October 7th.
At 7:00.
At 7:00. Yeah. Our new rule of council will have a meeting at 7:00 on the 7th, so that'll be easy. And then our next committee meeting would then be on Tuesday, October 15th, because Monday is, the 14th, is Columbus Day, which is a state holiday, and the city will be closed. So, we're looking at committee meetings on Tuesday, the 15th. However, there already is a meeting scheduled at the library discussing.
Electrical aggregation.
Electrical aggregation. Did that go away?
No, it's at the community center.
At the community center, okay.
6:00, 7:00.
6:30 to 8:00.
6:30 to 8:00.
It's at, I'm sorry, David, but.
Community, go ahead, sorry.
At the community center, not the library. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we expect a bigger turnout, since it is going to be countywide.
So, the question then arises, would council be okay with skipping the committee meeting on Tuesday, October 14th, and with an encouragement from the chair, that council members would attend the electrical aggregation informational meeting at the community center? Don't go to the library. Please. The community center. And then if we needed a little bit of extra time, we could actually have a special committee meeting on the next Monday and move our, move our council meeting back a little bit. So, that's a suggestion, is that, that it looks to me as though council members are saying, "Okay." So, our next regular meeting will be on Monday, October 7th, and then we'll be moving our attendance to the electrical aggregation informational meeting, which will be held at the community center, starting at 6:30 on Tuesday, October 15th. And we'll remind everybody of that on the 7th. And the Service Safety Director has something?
I guess I would just ask council, if we, the auditor, the mayor's office finds that there's a need for a committee meeting in advance of October 7th, if we find something that needs paid prior to October 21st, if council would consider adding a committee meeting in advance of a regular session.
To October 7th.
Or the 21st in particular, if we're going to skip meeting, the meeting that on the 15th.
Sounds like for sure that's going to need to happen, the 21st.
Yeah.
Pretty likely.
Yes, we could move in a committee meeting and pass some issue under suspension. I think that's happened before. Okay, so, our next meeting, October 7th, Monday, October 7th. So, we have no more business for.
Since we won't meet till the 7th, I just want to mention, there is going to be an opening for the Nelsonville Bypass. It's not in our city, but it is an event. I think it's October 1st.
October 1st at 9:30 a.m.
Okay.
But we don't know where. So, somewhere, we'll find out.
Somewhere on the bypass.
Somewhere on that large highway. Yeah, right. Just look for the bunch of people on the highway.
Well, this weekend, I think they're having races and walks, and they probably tell you there.
Seriously, we have an invitation here that gives us the time and the date, but we don't know where to congregate, so.
ODOT indicated today that details will follow.
Details to follow, okay.
Once it's RSVP, then Nelsonville.
Okay, okay. Although, all council members, all public is invited to attend that opening of the Nelsonville Bypass, October 1st, 9:30 a.m. Contact.
I don't have anything else. Anything else?
The mayor's office?
ODOT.
ODOT, Ohio Department of Transportation, if you're interested where to meet up. Okay, so, we have accomplished our work in committee meetings. We're going to move into a special session. And we have, let's see, a forum, we have all members present, we have an ordinance for first reading. Ordinance 12113, an ordinance appointing an assessment equalization board relative to replacement of existing sidewalks deemed in poor condition as part of the North Lancaster Street Infrastructure Improvements Project, fixing the time and place for such a board to hear objections to assessments and declaring an emergency. Introduced by Councilmember Nysely.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to suspend ordinance 12113.
Second.
The reason being that we need to have this ordinance passed before the assessment board meets in October.
Questions, sir? Okay, we have a motion in a second that the rules be suspended for ordinance 12113. All those in favor of suspending the rules signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Member Nysely, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 12113.
Second.
And this particular ordinance, as stated in the title, handles objections made to assessments that are being processed for sidewalk repairs on North Lancaster Street. It's part of a major improvement project in the north end of the city. The objections will be reviewed by a citizen committee. They will make a recommendation and bring that back to council. That particular committee meets on October 8th, and we'll hear their recommendations at a council meeting after that to decide whether we approve of the recommendations made.
And the meeting is 2:00 here, October 8th.
In this room?
This room.
Right here.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, now that we've decided not to meet on, what was that, the 14th or the 15th, because we're going to be at the aggregation meeting, is that going to cause a problem with the recommendation? Because we wouldn't hear that until the 21st in terms of the work and moving forward.
That's why I asked if we could reserve, if necessary, having a committee in advance of October 7th.
Committee or session, special session.
It's going to be a regular session anyway, that's what I meant.
Oh, I see.
They won't meet till the 8th.
They won't meet till after the 7th, this is the 8th.
With this, it doesn't make a difference.
Yeah, I don't. It doesn't make a difference. So, once they make the decision, it can move.
It can move forward as quickly or as late as you like.
Okay. I just thought we better check that.
Right.
I was confusing projects, you're waiting on the final figures of that, and then you've got Columbus Road and so.
Right, right.
That was, this is that UE, separate from.
Okay. Ordinance 012113, all those in favor of this ordinance signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ordinance is approved. And I think that's all there is in our special session.
No, executive session.
Then we're going to move into an executive session. An executive session with regards to labor negotiations and some possible litigation. So, this is council members only, so, what time is it? It's 8:12. If you, excuse me?
Can we allow the executive session?
I'm sorry, yes.
Executive.
Some of us.
Well, we still need to have a motion in a second.
I motion that we move into executive session with councils, all council members, the city law director, the member, mayor, and service safety director, and the auditor.
Second. If somebody doesn't want to stay, you don't have to, I guess. We have a motion, did we hear a second?
Yes.
We did?
Couple.
All those in favor of, okay, I've been a while.
Aye.
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 You missed me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, you weren't quick enough, okay. Okay, we have approved the motion to move into an executive session, so now it's 8:14. All those people who are not going to be included, we'll give you about 10 minutes to ask questions or, and/or move out of the room. We have one other miscellaneous item, I believe. Jennifer Cochran, she has a quick presentation and then can pass something around to decide.
The Athens City Council was approached, we made, by the Athens-Belfry Rail Trail Steering Committee, which is currently in search of letters of support for their work as they work to secure a portion of the former BNO railroad right-of-way in Athens County for use as a multipurpose trail. The work that they're currently doing is not within the city of Athens, but will help to provide increased recreational opportunities for our citizens as we link up the Athens Bike Way with. Bike Way with bikeways connecting to Belpre, to the east of us. So I offered to draft a letter of support with the consent of the rest of council and we'll be circulating that letter of support, just indicating that we appreciate the increased potential for recreation. This will also support increased tourism to our area, not only for bikers, but hikers and equestrians as well. This will not be a paved path, but rather more of a gravel bed in the railway area. So I will be circulating this, this letter of support after the meeting and if anybody has any questions, I'll do my best to answer them, although I'm not completely versed in the work that's going on. Thank you.
I want to point out, we've, we've done things with the Athens-Belpre, it, the ultimate, the city. We have written letters of support for miscellaneous grants that the bike people put together and Athens Conservancy has put together. The idea with this also is it will hook from Athens to Moonville to Belpre to, into West Virginia and ultimately, you know, Washington DC. So it's a long-term plan and I think that the whole process garnering the grant from Clean Ohio is one of the sources, but also BNO, so, and they're a challenging group to get to work with, so it's a good.
I worked for the county planner for years and that was always on, on the radar and he had plans and even had funding to take it on past, you know, out east from where we had to stop, but that kind of fell apart in terms of property ownership gets in the way.
And I think this, this fills in a lot of really essential pieces that have been looked at by the, the overall group and the county, Athens Conservancy and the hawk-hawking bike people and so, you know, if we can get BNO and do it.
And I was in Marietta last week, two Fridays ago, and they have a magazine called The Anchor and they mentioned they're increasing their trails in Marietta, the city of Marietta. And they mentioned in passing, trying to work their way down to Belpre and eventually to Athens, so they're coming at us from that side too, just so you know, there's, it's just not us.
So council members don't leave before seeing Ms. Cochran.
Thank you.